So tonight, there's a couple of intergovernmental agreements in the package. These are draft agreements that I figured we could discuss. One is the School Resource Officer. It's an agreement that we've had with the school district forever, as long as I can remember. And the other is, of course, the cash and lieu. The cash and lieu agreement has been looked at, you know, by our attorney and also by the school district's attorney. So this is an opportunity for a discussion between the two boards in regards to any questions they may have or any suggestions they may have in regard to these agreements. I think the, probably the only change I made to the SRO agreement was it's typically been 50% of whatever the school resources officer's salary is. And instead of putting a number in every year, I mean, and with us right now, we're still in our budget process. So I put 50%, because that's what it's been, 50% of whatever their earnings are. So just to make it simpler. So I don't know if anybody's had a chance to review that agreement. I don't believe there's been many. Please.
Okay. And that would see a change?
There might have been minor tweaks to it, if you remember, on that one.
I think this reflects a fair number of revisions when you compare it back to the older agreement. I think Fred of our office put that together. I don't know that they're dramatic.
Downboard on the board we thought. I certainly see a point. Cheryl, on the statistics. Would it like to be shared that rather than that dollar? What are his agreements? Just so we know. Or absolutely.
And I think, you know, some of the other changes we made were including Civica, since it's new in this agreement. And I think the other was, you kind of, I think you pointed that the school resource officer is also the attendance officer, which kind of feeds back to our community court IGA that you all just received and I believe approved.
Is that more than full time for someone? Is it several schools that cover? Do we have an approximation on hours or kind of work being completed in the hours that are occupied?
You may be able to answer that better than I. Jason Tobe is going to remain the SRO draft.
It's about, starts at seven in the morning. So you feel really locked in. So here we have a shift. And so.
What about like days the school's not in session? I'm sure there's catch up work.
Yeah, so when the school's not in session, he comes to the government controls. He comes to share.
I see. Thank you. You have a question, bro?
I have no question.
Trustee.
No questions.
Just the, I think it's no questions. Just easier.
Does Johnstown require an SRO person also?
We do have an idea of Johnstown.
So the alternate between schools or how does that work?
Same, yep. The, we have one officer. Johnstown helps building those goes through preschool over there.
Trustee Wong? Nothing yet. So, basically, I think in the climate that we're in, my questions mostly revolve around safety of the students. Should we have an, I hate to bring it up, but an active shooter situation. How are the schools prepared to handle both? And do you do a drill with the students, an actual drill? I don't want to frighten the students. I really don't.
And I'll, the chief speak to this because he does, we don't, we typically don't talk about this in both sessions, just because of the, we don't want to share the tactics and techniques we're using.
Oh, I don't want to know the details.
But, yeah. These guys do meet on a very regular basis.
The district is, the schools are pretty good at doing drills, you know, lockdown rooms and lockdown rooms. So there's a little bit of, and just keeping on a regular basis so that the kids are aware of the first thing that teachers do as well. So it's kind of that muscle memory type reaction. If there's lockdown, kids are always in the lockdown. So, yeah. We can look at that.
And then from an incident command standpoint, you, you guys are still meeting, I think annually is it with the fire district and I guess Johnstown and Wolf County sheriffs as well.
We do have a training. So there are not other agencies that, other act or shooting situation.
And so, and some of the, some of the money that we did, get from our NLO is, has been used to upgrade some security systems, especially the camera systems that, I believe at the middle school and high school. One of the things that we got requested from law enforcement was their ability to tie into those systems that actually been in the facility. And so, for the event that they could not, we didn't have an officer in the building and couldn't get an officer in the building, they could still receive access to our cameras so they could see what's happening inside. So that was part of the NLO pack, the stuff, the security systems to allow that type of connection.
It sounds like we're prepared, that's all that I'm concerned with. Okay. Questions from you for us on the, any concerns?
I have one question. Should Officer Tobe decide to take a different position and a different optic manner and maybe use a higher rank if his salary drastically is higher? We don't, obviously our 50% would go up as well. Is that correct?
Without a cap on it.
Yeah, without a cap. I lose.
One of the things that we try to do is we don't put a higher ranking officers there. Officer Tobe's been there for a while, so we have somebody, another officer that's underneath that rank will, that position.
I think, I think that is similar question to Director Hall. I think the only thing I would, I might want to see on the salary benefits is if we're going to move to a 50% instead of a fixed number. It, it just means the school district is now obliged to 50% of the salary that we don't set. So I think if some, if anything else, just a required notification window when it changes, just so we know we're on our side. And I'm not sure, Michael, if you can give, Mr. Richard, if you can give some idea of what kind of notification we would want, but I just think we'd want a notification before the number changed, since we won't be re-upping a hard number every time. And I don't know, I really don't think we need a limit or anything, because I assume, you know, it's, I know that salaries are pretty well set and there's a schedule and, you know, all that sort of stuff. I'm not super concerned, but I do think some kind of notification trigger when it is going to change would make sense, just so that we, on our end, can do our budget.
And so, I know your budget cycle is a bit.
Than ours?
Yeah.
And, and so, and we run into this with other people that provide services to us and out of nowhere, you know, maybe April after our budget's been set and whatever, we get this increase. And we're like, well, we didn't budget for that because we had no knowledge of it. So we completely understand. We set our budget in December of every year. And so that is a time that we could provide notice for your next budget cycle. If we agree to an amount, you know, the agreement is for a year. And so whenever, within that year it is agreed upon, we're not going to adjust it mid-year. And, and so you wouldn't have to worry about that, I mean, mid-year of the agreement if we change our officers or our officer gets an increase while this agreement's still in place. But it would be for the next agreement year, is, is how I see it. Because, you know, we can't, we can't anticipate for you and, and we can't guess before June, when your budget cycle is, I believe, what it's going to be.
Well, we, we know about that shortly. So as long as, as long as the agreement comes, it comes with a. It's typically solid in agreement or has before, if it comes as a exhibit or something, just to make sure it's in there that we know, you know, what it is and if it's any, plus it also poses a difference from the previous year. That'd be good.
I know it's, 50% sounds reasonable to me. I also wonder about, since schools in session 185 days and year-round employees have 260 days, have you ever thought of a daily rate of 50% of their salary or what does that?
Well, part of, part of this 50%, I understand what you're saying. We're not including that.
Including benefits.
Oh, okay.
So 50% is of what their wages are. So, I mean, we could delve a little deeper and, and, yeah. So I, I think, I think it would pretty much even out between.
They figure out that, you know.
Yeah, so.
I think with the budget, that's what we're doing with Johnstown. That was a concern on our last, when we have digit IGA with them too, it was like, you know, we obviously don't want to get surprised with the, hey, it's a 15% increase across the board that we're going to have to try to pick up to.
We had just one budget quarter in a second, pretty much. Get it in there.
But if, I mean, as soon as, you know, I mean, you actually go before we do in setting your budgets, so just, you know, by that time, if you could just.
Absolutely.
Just, just let us know and then it can go into our budget cycle.
We would go before January and what that.
That is, before the end of January, you should say, so.
Really valuable agreement. I'm glad, I'm glad to have both of them here and both of them with the town of Johnstown. I think sure, bear the issue he brought up is, that's one of the real values we get out of this is having the expertise of our SROs in helping to protect, open, secure.
Thank you. And it's nice for the kids to know an officer.
Especially, you know, if it's the same officer every year. I think that's really important for them.
Can I imagine, you know, if they run into a community in the summertime, they know him as, you know, he may be working different work over the summer, but they know him as the, you know, the person they know from school. And that's valuable too. And I think that's valuable to us as a district as well, even when he's not, even maybe in the summer when he's not doing district stuff. I think he's, he's probably more considered ours than he is yours in that way and is an ambassador for the district as well as schools and then for the town. So I think it's very, really.
Anything else you want to iron out? Changes? Madam Settle? Hey, we'll move on to the cash and lieu. Same process. Does the town board have any questions for you? Trustee Wong?
I don't.
Trustee Meesner?
I don't have any.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Not at this time.
Trustee Granquist?
No, no, just two.
May I approach in pro?
I'll have you.
And then Trustee Wing?
No, I have not read this very thoroughly as I would like to. Not here.
I do have an issue with section 7C. Scrolling down, it's the second sentence from the final one. I'll go ahead and read it, so everybody doesn't have to look for it quickly. permitted expenditures must be for the purposes of site acquisition, new construction, or life extending development, or enhancement of existing facilities. So it's that enhancement of existing facilities. I think that already got us a difference of opinion between our last agreement and how we discovered money was spent. Enhancement, to me, can mean purpose of lines, painting of walls, and really in a cash and lieu, and this is just my opinion, I'm willing to hear what the rest of the board has to say. My idea is, the purpose is, the money is coming from the developers as they build new houses to provide either an extension longevity of an existing school or a new seat in a school for a child. And I don't need totally finance that, but put money towards that. Painting wall and blinds and striping, parking lot doesn't do that for a child. So I'd like to see some definition of enhancement, so we are very clear about what we mean that to be. Because leaving it as ambiguous, at some point down the road, when we're all long gone, I do have an explanation date at some point in the future. I don't want to see another board, you know, get into the predicament that we were.
True. I, I think we could probably define or did a definition of enhancement that would fit that. I, I tell you honestly, I didn't find a striking word from the agreement.
Yeah, I, what I see there, I totally agree with your point there. What I would see that more as meaning and what we need to probably think more about language around is basically like increasing capacity. Because the scenario I could see is where we may re-task rooms that are not currently classrooms, in the classrooms or have increased capacity at an existing site. And that wouldn't necessarily be covered in new construction or life enhancement. So I want to preserve the ability to, to be able to do that, because there are times when we convert a library into classrooms or whatever, and that does increase capacity, provides extra seats, to your point. And so, but, so I would probably more reword the word enhancement towards increased capacity or something along those lines.
I do like the term increased capacity, because in my mind, I wasn't thinking of that example. I was thinking of modules. When you obtain modulators, maybe you get the modular for free, but you've got to pay to move it or put that down for, or put that down for it, that kind of thing, so.
Could we, instead of saying, outside, I hear your concern, is you don't want the school board paying to stripe the parking lot or build bleachers or put a ball field or angles. I hear that. Could we say enhancement of instructional facilities, so that it's specific to school buildings, school rooms?
And then jump in here with another, just as something that you consider is that D, the board has to approve each and every expenditure of the amount stated. Is that right? So I'm understanding.
Yeah, that's true, but then we're back to, we're not here, this agreement is enforced. And then we've got two bodies trying to figure out what was meant by, you know, enhancement. Really, we're trying to increase capacity. We're trying to provide additional facilities. I don't really mind what the words are there, as long as it's something a little bit more than.
But it'll get, it gets a little awkward, you get a lot of ups in there, but I mean, I, I would almost do something along the lines of enhancement of capacity of existing facilities. Because I, I would agree with you, I do think the focus of this IGA is on, on extending the length of buildings and expanding the capacity of our buildings. That's what this money is for, we have other money to pay parking lots, you know, so.
You, by any, any concern?
Yeah, I'm not sure that I see building a consortium standard as being enhancement.
Which is why I said instructional.
Yeah.
Because then we could run it to school rooms.
So, man, are you able to capture that? It's enhancement of.
Well, what I have is enhancement of capacity of existing instructional facilities.
So I. About my existing instructional facilities. Are we building a new building to bring in a modular? Does that limit what we're.
They grabbed the word existing.
So that's.
No, that's true. We bring in a modular, we want to be able to.
Increase instructional capacity.
Constructional capacity.
Maybe that would be the benefit of D is that if there is some confusion or gray area, the board at that time, whether that may be five months or five years, can pass that out of the side area, they, they have the right to do each other's things.
No, I think, I think at least amount of ambiguity there possible, so.
Agreed.
Yeah, and we can mention something to Adele too.
So can you read that once more?
There were a couple more revisions that I think I called. What I have is enhancement of capacity, I guess, of instructional facilities.
Yeah. To remove, to destroy, to exist.
Yeah. Okay, the only other thing that I had was the breach. I made a note on here and it's now gone. Has to do with curing a breach. That you would have the opportunity, I, I'm working from memory right now, to cure the breach, but I don't really understand how we would. Oh, thank you. How would, how would you cure a breach? So if you spent money that we had not agreed upon, we, meaning the board at that time, not necessarily us here, how would you go about curing that? That was my question. Now, still trying to find any questions.
If at the bottom of the section nine, I leave all in red, if either party claims it reached this agreement, there shall be no termination of this agreement unless a written notice to cure a breach of my issue to parties.
It's right there, there's my note. Yeah. Sorry, it's all of all in one. There's my note right there. There. Okay.
I think in the same sense, the, the term references determination due to a breach. Then what is, I agree with that question, what is the satisfaction of the financial, you know, I guess in the scenario, if, if the money were spent, but if we have 30 days, you know, the board has 30 days to revoke or veto that expenditure and spend the money anyhow, that's a part of the contract, which cancels this, but how does that, does that money get replenished, reimbursed? I don't know if that's called out.
That sounds like legal language.
I'm sure. Three M.
Your term gets the best.
The question is, it looks, it looks like the term, like the contract itself, if breached, it's terminated. But what is it, is there any contingency for the restoration of funds? If, you know, they, they spend money on something that wasn't, you know, let's say we, the board vetoed it and they spent the money anyhow. Should that ever happen, I don't know, but let's just say.
So I was, actually, I was actually at the end and it's dispute resolution process. And this does call for an effort to mediate disputes. So I think that probably would be invoked. What I was looking at most closely is it initially calls for JAG, Judicial Arbiter Group, but it also allows for the parties to simply select a mediator on their own. And I think typically, in practice, that's what happens, because JAG can be very complicated. So a local mediator that's an attorney or a porter judge is often selected through that process.
You have a miscommunication.
That would involve, that would have to be a great rule. And then, then if, you know, if that did not resolve the issue, then, I mean, there is a right to bring a claim in court.
Sounds rather severe for two boards that are supposed to be kind of working together.
Well, I think that's the reason for the.
And perfectly, it should, if, if the school board came to you and you said no, and we did it anyway, that should be pretty severe consequences. I mean, but at the same time, I think the, if, if it were to go to JAG or, or more severe steps, the cost of that, is that, is that, I'm looking to see if that was, is that our burden to then pursue the restitution of funds?
I don't believe there's an attorney's fee provision here. I could be wrong. I'd like to check.
Maybe that would be.
That has benefits and it has detriments to implement such a provision. So in other words, if you, if some, if one body files suit against the other and prevails, then an attorney's fee provision would, would award attorney's fees to the prevailing party. But that does tend to escalate disputes. And so sometimes it's, it's in the interest of both parties to leave out attorney's fees. What that means is you have to pay your own attorneys if you're going to fight with each other.
Was the, you know, should a breach occur, I was thinking the first step is that we should be having regular meetings anyway, that we should be, we should be reviewing. But in my mind, what I was going through is when we meet regularly, we should be going through, this is how the money is spent. Michael comes to the table and says, here's your reports that you are regularly supposed to receive, we've spent no money, we've spent no money. Oh, okay, we've come up with expenditures that we're going to have, you approved it on such and such a date. And then if we find out that, okay, money was spent, it wasn't approved, now you've got the breach, at that time, we would start discussing what happened.
I think that's right. And, and in line with what the school district suggested, the first sentence is, in the event of any dispute or claim arising under or related to this agreement, the party shall use their best efforts to settle such dispute or claim through good faith negotiations with each other. So I, I think that's consistent with what you're describing.
Okay, which.
That's, I think toward the end, it's like 10H or J. I think, I think it's 10J. Very.
Okay. She was actually. Are you comfortable? About the guys, do you have any questions and some comments? It's quiet tonight.
You've been on a couple of nights, so I'm, I was, I was curious about the, the dispute resolution process, so I was glad to see you in there.
Okay. Anything else on this subject? All right. I have a question for you. Rumor mill's been heavy at work. And I'm hearing that you're not going to build the athletic field at the new high school. Is that a rumor? Is that true? What's the deal?
That would be a rumor.
That would be a rumor, okay.
Right now, we have, we have an agreement with TRPR to use their, their baseball fields. As it stands right now, our high school teams use the, those fields because we don't, we really only have the one field. And so by using the fields at Nelson Park, you can have JV game and varsity game going at the same time. We probably can get a C team game going in there. When it comes to softball, the same thing, that we just have a lot of flexibility there. The, the site plan at Roosevelt does call for a baseball field and a softball field. They are, how do I want to say this, lower priority than any other amenity at that location just because we do have an agreement with TRPR. The, the hope is though that we would build all those fields, but no, there will be four athletic fields at my school.
And so there will be a football stadium.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the only thing.
Rumors get started.
Yeah, no, the.
I like this.
Yeah, the only thing in that is only because we don't have to make a decision on those now, because that landscape, that background will be landscaped, flat and ready to go. And if we don't build it now, there will be, the, the land will still be there if we want to do it later. So we don't. So we don't have to make a decision on that right now either. So it's one of those, like, if we get there and the money's available, absolutely. If we need it for other things along the way, then, you know, it may become fresh down the road. But I think the only thing we're talking about is maybe the two softball fields or the two baseball fields, because we have another option with TRPR.
Yeah, and we had a workshop with them, yeah. And they're, they have no problems with that, they're, they're agreeing with the way it exists right now. So, so if you look at the most recent drawing that's been published, the softball fields and the baseball field are to the east of the lot, and they're kind of grayed out because they are an alternate right now. But the football fields, they're just, they're just lower priority.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't adjust. If all push comes to shove.
Right.
We have baseball fields that we can use, so we wouldn't build those.
They wanted us to build them. They, I mean, they were very clear that they would like us to go.
While, while, while they're willing to continue to honor the agreement we have, they would like to see them though. Because I think they need some use out of it, too.
Yes.
Yes.
Speaking, speaking of TRPR, I was wondering how they look back to since our conversation, you get a conversation about parking and the expansion of the pool in Milliken, about using, leveraging the parking at the admin building as a way of moving forward the expansion of the pool there. So hopefully they'll be looking back at you guys to talk to you about that.
Yeah, we're working on, and we'll be with them to, for them to use our administration buildings, parking, that's kind of overflowed when they do the expansion.
Please keep me in there while, I'm always able to focus that up.
I just want to let you hear from us, we're pretty excited about that idea, and we've talked about a couple of arrangements with them, so, you know, hopefully we can make that work. I'm not sure exactly what Joel's requirements are around the parking that they need to have, but we're excited to partner with you on it.
Yeah.
It's still planning first and then it comes to you, and so...
Put a little muscle on them, too, because we were trying to, we're trying to talk them into taking some of our modulators off our hands at that facility to use either for additional space for the, for the MAC, for preschool and Head Start programs. They were kind of, we got kind of squirmy when we talked about that.
They have nice modulars, but they got squirmy.
Well, I think they have...
They have Boys and Girls Club with them all.
Yeah, I think they have other, other plans for the land, that's close to the park.
How big are those modules? Which one do you want?
Couple different sizes.
Uh, no.
I'm in need of another comics box. My stuff! And you know, I've had my eye on a UTV for Beef and Bean Day, need to park it in something. Make you crazy. I'll bet you would. The question is, where would we park it?
Well, I think that's where the TRPR was thinking. They kind of like the idea that they're, I think they have, I think they have bigger plans on that, this ground.
Well, we've had some conversation with them about, you know, Beef and Bean Day is our big event, this last one, that little out of hand, we, we will not be having KCBS back again for a competition. It lost a little bit in a small town field, and they had colonized step in infection. We didn't get lunch or bathroom breaks until late afternoon. It was not pleasant. And so we're like, okay, enough of this, but we will, we will do backyard barbecue, we will do kids cubes, we will have all of those more hometown events at TRPR. And of course, we want to kind of increase parking capacity if possible, anything like that. So we're always interested in kind of what you're talking about as well. So that's, that's how it ties back to the whole parking thing.
Well, I think, I think we also talked about with the, with the expansion, they're planning, the benefit, that much benefit to swim team for the, for the district as well, too. So just, I guess, just know that we're excited about their project and encourage and we're looking to work and do whatever we can to partner with them to get, solve whatever problems we can help them solve, get that done.
And where are we at with the swimming pool?
I have no clue. So I'll wait till we're all in the sea current.
Well, I appreciate that.
The main, the main thing behind that right now is water.
They did say that, yeah.
Yeah.
Colorado.
Couldn't we clean up some of the hills for a ditch waterfall for it? It might not be the cleanest, but, all right, maybe that's not a good idea.
I do have a question, though, here.
Yes.
I know we talked about this. And, and, you know, so you've got modulators, and you know you don't have enough capacity at Milliken Elementary School. Could those be used there?
When we put the modular at Milliken Elementary School, it was really about trying to find size for it, so we don't take away from the play areas. The capital was expensive at the time, and we put a bunch of the, the one, the new ones in there. We were very deliberate about where we placed it, just so it would not affect that playing field. Because I think it's a little bit of stuff out there, obviously, maybe for this coordination program, some stuff out there. So, yeah, that's where it just becomes an issue, is that we have to, we have to take away from the recreation side of the, of the site.
And I think to be clear, we will have modulators. All of our current modulators are in use. So we will have some from Lefford, you know, once, once Adwell's open, we'll have some from the high school, once the high school's open, we'll have some from, I mean, so there will, over the next few years, be several available. So it was a bit of, that was a bit of a thing, timing issue, too, as far as TRPR goes. But there's, they're all in use right now, they all got kids in them.
I was just, I was just curious, because it does seem like there's a lot of green space, a lot of green space at Milliken Elementary School. And, well, and they could be, but, you know, when it comes to busting your kids forty minutes a day, which is more important?
The other issue that we have to take into consideration, especially at the elementary school site, is, and I don't, and I don't, Ms. Tressler, you have, know the numbers, I know Jeff Chamberlain would have, depending on the age level of, in the modular, we have to provide certain amenities, and we have to have what access.
We can have dry modulators at the high school, and I think we have some at the, at the middle school, but I believe all the elementaries, if there's a modular, they're left.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Bathrooms.
Yep. Milliken Elementary is also about to become a construction site. So the design process is underway, I think, underway, right?
Yes.
Yeah, the design group is underway designing the enhancements to Milliken Elementary. So by the time...
Advancement.
Expansion, educational capacity, or whatever. So honestly, by the time we've had modules put on there, we're going to be parking construction stuff on there anyway, so it's, the timing is...
That's true.
Yeah, no, it's a good question, it's a firm question, but...
I've lost that area, I can't, I already saw him to chase that area.
I know, and I, I...
Let me ask you a couple of questions related to that. I had a citizen mention to me about the Presbyterian Church has a dirt field all around it. Is there a possibility that you guys can come to some mutual agreement for teachers to be able to park over there and create additional parking?
The property at one point was for sale, and we actually discussed buying it for that purpose, more to park buses, I think, than, the problem is, I don't know if people in that neighborhood necessarily will have a parking lot in their, in their backyard, so I may have to...
But...
Some zoning moves.
I think you have to talk to the church leadership board, and I know they're looking for a pastor right now, with decisions like that without a pastor.
Well, I mean, if it's just sitting there as a dirt field, that's got to be maintained and cut, sometimes it looks better aesthetically as a parking lot with, for, you know, that serves a purpose for the community.
Yeah. No, it's, it's, it's on our list of items that we're, we're interested in.
Yeah.
Everybody's thinking the same thing.
Yeah, and this may be a good segue into kind of what Ms. Tressler and I have been talking about, Ms. Tressler and Cheryl have been talking about, and that's trying to develop, at least at the school district level, a, a task force, a planning task force, that would work with both municipalities, probably all four municipalities, somebody, probably get really, and Berthold involved in this, some, somebody down the road, but right now, Milliken and Johnstown. And it'd probably be, you know, parent administrators for sure, planning directors, maybe people from the planning commissions, but just to meet on a regular basis to kind of talk about these sorts of things. And as we know that there, that there's interests in, you know, just like us having an interest in that property by, by the Presbyterian Church, it's good to have that on, you know, Cheryl's radar, so she knows what's going on. And maybe it's, maybe it's a board member from each town, two, or one or two, but just meeting on a regular frequency. And that was kind of, when I started talking with you about us continuing to meet on a planned frequency, I guess, that was kind of the intent, was so that we always both know projects that were coming down the pipe for both of us, so that we can kind of work together on these sorts of things. Obviously, a task force like this would be long-term, it's some long-term stuff. I think one of the things we'd want to get involved as well is, is somebody from the state demographers officer, at least do their, their reports that they provide to help guide us as a school district on, on facility planning, but also, you know, to give that feedback back to you guys, so that you guys can start kind of making decisions based on the direction, you know, we might be heading in, you know, five, seven, ten years, not even twenty years.
Well, you know, I'm Mr. Rex, so of course I'm going to know. Is it really advantageous for us to have Greeley up at 34 in this school district? Because, you know, we've got a planned development that came across us, in, in front of us just for review. So that development, I believe, was eight hundred homes, and it's got a elementary school in it. Until the elementary school's built, are you going to bust those kids to Johnstown?
We, yes.
Yeah.
We will be, they're zoned for 12RE5J. And if you look at the school district maps, you, and trace back to history, a lot of these school districts were divided by farms. And when they were divided back, I think, around 1963, when also you had two, and you were joined, RE5J joined, then they combined some others. And it will, it, there's statute that you can share districts or change the boundaries. It's somewhat complicated, but it could be done, either by a vote. The district I came from, they were, the district was offered a certain area off of Weld County 13, the superintendent at the time said, no, thank you. And it went on. So they ran on to Thompson.
Because I think that, excuse me, I guess in my mind, when I looked at the map, I'm like, well, Johnstown doesn't go up to 34, so why does Milliken, well, it's not really Milliken, but why does the area above Milliken go up to 34, thereby encompassing part of Greeley, where, you know, the parents pay the taxes for the roads and the maintenance, whatever, in Greeley, and yet they're paying the taxes for schools to RE5J? It just seems to be disconnected there.
In a way, Thompson River Ranch, or the town of Johnstown, that's Thompson School District.
Yeah.
Or even West Greeley, they all in Greeley, but they are Windsor School District as well.
I would think we have three, the fours in post, in our school district.
Yeah.
If you're asking if the school district boundaries make sense...
Yeah, that's kind of really what I'm, I mean, I can understand Berthold in a way, but that whole Greeley business just confounds me. I don't understand that.
If you want to get together and petition the state, to change the district boundaries, let's do it. We don't draw, and we didn't, we don't draw that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, and one, I think the, I think actually the process is, is you have to have, it has to go to the electorate, and it has to be a majority vote of both, both affected districts to make the, to make the switch. And so, you know, it's just like, you know, loving, Thompson, Thompson is not going to give us Thompson River Ranch, they're not going to give us 2534. And that's, they're, yeah, they're making a lot of money there. And I think we would feel the same about Golden Triangle, it's, you know, if the city here wants to build houses up there, we're going to take those ten dollars.
Very awesome.
Just wondering, yeah.
The folks around the table will know that we're looking at data competence, someone which, you'll wear competence of these municipalities, our ten to twenty year plans are updated on a five year cycle. And stakeholders are engaged, such as RE5J, that would be a very opportunity to mesh our, our planning efforts with you, get feedback, and we'll know about the grant that we submitted recently, hopefully in November, the plans are, hit that off after the first year. So we will be able to, we will find out who, who in their group would make no sense to sit on our, on our committees.
Absolutely.
And be, and be, so, you are going to figure out that, that effort, at least starting out that way.
Yeah, no, and that'd be a good opportunity, too, for us to get our master plan into your hands, so you guys can document it in your comprehensive plan, facility plans.
And I do like the idea of the task force, I think. I think it'll be a better representation, and, and probably with folks that have more knowledge of what's going on in each municipality, and, and, you know, based on our comprehensive plan where we're going, you know, because we know what subdivisions may spark soon, and, or what annexations may be taking place, you know, more than you will. So I think it's very important, and I love the idea of the state demographers office being involved, because that's a third party, that's somebody who's impartial to whatever the number, you know, they're going to come with the numbers, they're going to come with what they're seeing. They don't have to live in Johnstown or Milliken to, you know, be able to weigh in on this. And I think that's important for all of us.
I'm writing this for you, as, as chair of the bar.
Notice that quickly, she said no.
Yeah.
They will also, they will also help us with what school sites we need, how much acreage we should be looking for. My worry is, as you grow, where are we going to find the available land? I can tell you, Greeley would love to take some land because they need places for schools. And if that, the word gets out, I might get a call tomorrow.
Well, that brings me to another question, you know, full of questions. So you've got these inner-city schools, they don't have lots of land for acres and acres. How do they fare with not having the same land space for recreational activities as opposed to, you know, your inner-city schools as opposed to...
That's a good question. You know, obviously, they, they share the facility somewhere, like, you know, when I was in the, they have Jeffco Stadium, which is, everybody, everybody who jumps in can use Jeffco Stadium for their, for their stuff. I guess it depends on, you know, the types of schools that we want to, that we want to build. You know, when we, when we did some of our surveys around the bond question, both, both the bond question that failed, and even the one previous to that, that never made it to ballot, our three, three bond questions essentially, you know, we, both communities really still like the idea of the neighborhood school that has all those amenities on it. And so that's, that's kind of the direction we would still like to, to move. I think there will be a day, I hate to say it, and we'll, we probably will have a school on a city block that has no exterior facilities because it's, that's just where it moves.
Not that it's a school that they built up there, but 37 and Two River, wherever that is, your Prairie View.
Yeah.
Whatever that is, over there. Grass is as far as the eye can see, and I'm like, I don't know how much of that cost to maintain. I'm just like, does that seem a bit...
But they do have a football field, and then stuff on that.
They do.
In the middle school, the large middle school, I don't know how many people are there.
Surrounding it, though, it's just grass, grass and...
Silver grounds.
Oh, those are down the road a little ways.
They have an over expansion as they grow as well.
That's true.
And I think, too, you have to look at the people in inner cities who are buying homes versus what has made Johnstown and Milliken so attractive to people. Maybe they want that, they want the school with the stuff outside for the kids, maybe they're leaning away from that and they need to come to that.
Yeah, I just think that has to be...
We have to, they have the plans, too, that we have on, on Milliken Middle School, on the... We have to, they have the plans too, we have on Milliken Middle School, on the elementary school conversion there, it is, that, that's, that was really limited, in fact, that building for us, for a middle school, is there, which is for house space there too, if we want to keep the football field, and we do.
Yeah.
And so, there's, that building would be, but there's still would be a pretty good-sized player area with some field and space there too, so.
But you would keep the football field?
No, in our, in the, in the drawings that we have, it was, it kind of, it's kind of hard to explain. So, the newer portions of the building, the new gym and the old gym, that, that would all stay, and the kitchen, gap to, then the building would come out into the football field, where the older part of the building on that east or south side, that would go away, that would become more of a player, and so it almost kind of worked in conjunction with Lola Park, as, kind of affecting it, but it'd be green on both sides there.
I need to bring you a copy of the plans.
I think the, against your master plan, you have the...
We haven't done any, we haven't done any updates on it since our failed one, other than, like you said, what the student do, but the facility plan. No, that'd be great for your comp plan.
I would really like to see in this task force that we, and it's probably because I wear both hats here, but, you know, I'm, I'm thrilled with what, what the school district is doing for the new high school, the new elementary school, I think conversion of Roosevelt is to a middle school is, those are all optimal decisions that, that were made, but sitting on Milliken Town Board then, and having the problem of Kyle Milliken maintains their desirability to people moving to the community with, without a middle school or high school in their community, I, I have a real conflict with that personally, and it's, it's gotten very difficult for me, because, like I say, I'm, I'm thrilled with the high school that we built and what's going to be offered to the kids of our, our school district, but somehow, I feel like we have to resolve this so that we're not spending all of our school tax dollars in one square mile, as we did this time. If we hope to unite this district with two separate municipalities and four, two to four, however you want to look at it, then we need to be able to resolve some of those issues, so that it's not off balance with, with any of the municipalities. Now, my, my tax dollars for my commercial property, down $500, and I believe $480 is going into Johnstown for those tax dollars, and I don't bring that up to make it an issue, I bring it up so that we understand what impact that has on the municipalities of the school district, and how, how difficult that is, especially with Milliken being the smaller of the two communities for all of those dollars to go there. And, you know, I, I just have residents in Milliken saying, "Wow, this is really nice, Johnstown gets three new schools, and Milliken got three new parking lots," and I don't even know if that's true without two, if that's right. So, somehow, we need to come together on that, and work, work together to, to understand how that's going to be, and, you know, some of, some of the comments that have been made have been very hurtful to Milliken residents about how this plan came about, and if we hope to unite the district, then I think this board has, has to work on that, task force would be a good step in that, in that direction when we go over there and talk about. I think that's the element.
Well, I'd like to understand something. The middle school is allegedly out of room, and yet you're considering taking part of the football field to build out the, and eliminate half of the school already that's there, but you're going to build a whole new school out into the football field? Is that what I heard?
Yeah.
Then why can't you just expand that school into the football field and leave it as a middle school?
Because then we would lose the football field.
You're going to lose the football field anyway, that's what you just said.
Well, we'll move the football field, we'll trade the spaces, we'll move the football field to the east side, or the, I want to say east side, to the south side, or the older part of the building as, as part of an elementary school.
But it wouldn't be a football field still?
It would be a player, it would be a...
It'd be a player, and just not a football field.
Similar to what we have in Milliken Elementary.
Okay. Well, you could eliminate the football field and still have plenty of play area.
For now, that is...
By extending that building and continuing to use it as a middle school.
We could, I mean, again, though, our, our master plan is to build a new middle school.
Your master plan is to take everything out of Milliken and put it all in Johnstown.
No, that's, that's, that's not, that's not correct at all.
That's the way it looks to those of us who live here.
Well...
You know, you got, you're building the football, you do the football things out at the Nelson Field, everybody that goes out there, they want drinks, they want food, they want, so where do they go? They go to Johnstown, they don't come to Milliken. Everything is happening in Johnstown, and you guys are not bringing anything at all to Milliken.
Okay. Well, we have a master plan that says otherwise, and we'll, we'll share that, so you can have it for your, your comp plan, because it does include converting the current Milliken Middle School into a elementary school, and building a second, a second middle school.
So, when that...
Just south of that location.
When that gets converted to an elementary school, then we will no longer have to bus elementary students to Johnstown.
Well, I'm not going to promise that, I mean, that is the intent.
That's the intent.
Hopefully, that will, that will solve the capacity protections that we have, but...
That's about how many more houses.
If we have more houses, I mean, growth is, I mean, that's, that's the boat we're in right now, growth is, our, our student population has outgrown our facility plans, and so we're trying to plan ahead of that, that's why, that's why we want to build the second middle school, that's why we want to build the second elementary school. Hopefully, the projections that we've seen would, would allow us to do that, but I'm not, I can't sit here and promise you that they will solve that problem.
Because that's, that's the thing that bothers me, is, you know, now, okay, we've got high school students busing to Johnstown, we're going to have middle school students busing to Johnstown after a while, now we're going to bus elementary school kids. So, if we convert the middle school to an elementary school, and we're able to keep at least the elementary school kids here, that would be like step one.
Yeah, and, and the plan should allow for quite a bit of growth.
I...
If we grow, if we grow faster than those buildings, the problems are, you know, it's, it's anybody's guess at that point.
How many middle school students are being serviced at KQRA and Civica?
I don't know the number at Civica, but I think we're at 385 at KQRA.
Middle school?
KQRA. I'm not sure how many.
Oh, that is KQ.
Michael comes up. I can, I can pull them up here and guess exactly.
I think to, I think to your question, if we could wave a magic wand and get folks' projects done now, we wouldn't have to bus kids, given where we are now, and given a reasonable amount of growth, we probably wouldn't, we still probably wouldn't have to bus kids at the time they're completed. Now, the question is, where does the growth, how does, how does the growth here and capacity here match? But, yes, if we could do it right now, just, you know, make them sprout out of the ground, if you would want them to be at this moment, no, we would not have to, we would not need to do that. And as Michael said, there is, there's also a reasonable level of growth in that protection as well, the only thing we don't have control over is how the capacity grows.
And part of that, and then again, you know, Karen and I...
And I spoke today too, what's important to take into consideration is the demographics. You know, I don't think that was really looked at a whole lot when the original placement of the schools, the ideal placement would have been done, or should have been done, based on the demographics. You can't go backwards, and so I think this is a way to go forward and go forward and do it correctly. So, I think, there again, using that third party to provide us with true factual numbers as, as they see it happening is, is the way, route to go, so we don't run into this situation again. You know, growth is projected to slow down, based on what, I believe, what pepper you read, that growth is projected to slow down, at least on the Weld County side, but how much that is, we don't know. I mean, we've experienced a lot of growth in, in Milliken, and, you know, we're way behind in, in schools, I mean, and both sides, I guess, but particularly here, based on the number of kids we've got in Milliken. So, you know, this is a way to move forward. Task force, I think, is, is a good start.
Well, I mean, that's, the task force will help us get better estimates on how the buildings can accommodate growth, because that's, at the end of the day, that, you know, the more houses they get built, the likelihood of more kids being there is, is higher. Our, you know, we, we try to use the same numbers that the municipalities are using for us to, I, I think right now, we're, I mean, it's less than one student per household, which is the number that we're, then what we call, I mean, 0.8 student per rooftop that gets built, it used to be, you know, 1.5, 2.5, but it's 0.8 now. And so, based on, and that's the number that we use, based on that, we should have reasonable growth capacity in a second elementary school at that, at the Milliken district.
So, do you have a calculation of Johnstown in the middle school district?
I don't have that. You have it? I have that, but... We have 201 students at Civica and KQRA, 6, 7, and 8. Now, that doesn't, I don't know how many of those are with, reside within 5J and were out of district, I don't know of those, how many they, they get from that district.
And would that include the freshman classes as well?
No, that's just a, just middle school grade.
Okay.
So, one of the things that we could probably also provide to the task force is, I mean, there was a, there was a third-party demographics report done, you know, as part of the bond process, right after the bond was approved, so we have that as well. So, I mean, we have, definitely, we definitely pulled a lot of information together as part of that process, we could definitely provide to the task force as well, that they could be useful.
Yeah.
And that, because, I mean, then you don't have to spend a lot of money doing it. That was not an expensive report.
Yeah.
Has there been an increase of students going to homeschooling versus regular schooling a little faster now?
We haven't seen much, we, we decided to expand our online program, and we do have some students involved in that, like, my daughter is, enrolled her last week, she has some, she's got some, she's, we need to have her there for about a semester. But, yeah, we, it hasn't been...
I think we've seen, some number of students come out of the online program this year, and we've seen, the challenge here, we've seen growth in enrollment this year, not quite as much as we had planned for, so we definitely might have to make some budget adjustments because of that, but there has, there was growth in the district this year versus last year.
I think parents returning to work, I mean, they need to send their kids to school. Any other questions, concerns, or comments? Well, very productive. I'm sure, Cheryl, you and Karen can get together for when we need to meet again. We've got the adjustments for the school resource officer and the cash and move, so you anticipate the cash and move has to be approved for, from their board first or from us?
Generally, I don't think it came, SRO usually was in front of us, but I don't think it does either, because I don't even know how the, with the original agreement, where it came from originally, and so, where it was approved originally. The SRO, I think, you know, I'm comfortable with bringing it to our board at the next meeting, and then sending it on to the school board, you know, with the caveat that we will, of course, by end of January of each year, let them know what that salary amount is.
And then cash and move, who was sending that up to us last meeting in this month? September, whatever that is?
I think, unless there was more comments, if people wanted to review it more, you know, both attorneys have looked at it, I think, you know, taking out enhancements and putting in the language that Attorney Gould has come up with, would suffice for both boards, so I'm comfortable bringing it here and then passing it on to the school board for their approval.
I appreciate that.
I'd like to request at this, I don't know who gave this information, but we found what percentage of high school students live in Johnstown versus Milliken?
What?
The percentage of Johnstown high school students to Milliken high school students, how many of the high school students that are enrolled, what percentage live in Johnstown?
I bet JJ could get that for us.
Is that okay?
Well, I think we had it from our, from our last, from Shannon, probably.
Yeah, no, it's in, it's in that demographer report, they can't do that. So, we, yeah, we, public documents, you all people, it's probably a board doc somewhere, we'll find it where, you don't have to go take it out.
Yeah, if you want to, I mean, right before we're on to the board.
Yeah, we could do that whole thing, we did one, and then we did an updated one, we had to do the bus routing too, but Shannon did the pre-admiral one too, it's got all kinds of things up in it, so we...
Shannon's would probably be better than JJ's, because a lot of high school students drive.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are awesome.
I do.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, yeah.